This time we'd ask that you stand for our salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. This time I'd ask that we observe a moment of silence for our troops serving overseas. Thank you and good evening. First, I'd like to thank everyone for breathing the weather to come out today. We are missing Ms. Pat Mariano, who had a family member pass away. Our condolences are extended to her and her family.
Sandy.
Begin with sharing the success. This SLE Middle School was recently granted a $100,000 fitness room that will be installed sometime in December. We're excited by the letter we got from the National Foundation for the Governors Fitness Councils that's pleased to inform us that the South Lawrence East Middle School has been selected by the National Foundation for Governors Fitness Councils and the state of Massachusetts as a national champion school. We would like to recognize and support your school's commitment to youth fitness and wellness by awarding your school with a Live Positively Fitness Center. That fitness center will total almost $100,000 and will be installed within the next month. We look forward to taking the school committee on a tour of that when it is completed. Congratulations to them.
Mr. Riley questions, sir?
Yes, sir.
On this congratulation to the school, they have to apply, right? They meet certain conditions.
Right, they had to apply. I think they were uniquely positioned because athletics and fitness are part of what they do at that school.
Very good, and congratulations to them.
Thank you, and thank you to the students and the teachers and administration over there. We'd also like to recognize tonight, one of our special education teachers, Jean Fathergill, has written and received a music therapy grant from Kate's Voice. This is a $2,200 grant. Students, not only from Jean's class, but other special education classes, benefit from a once-a-week total hands-on musical instruments sing-along with professional musicians. All students are engaged under the enthusiastic direction of a music teacher, Ms. Laura, from Roman Music Therapy. That's from Mr. O'Keefe. We congratulate the teacher for winning that again. I'd like to congratulate the following students who've been named ambassadors of peace. To be an ambassador of peace, you need to choose to treat others the way you want to be treated, with respect. Express your feelings in a respectful way. Know it's important to ask for help. Offer to help people around you. Use good manners. Be a good listener. Stop, think, and choose well. Find peaceful solutions and reach for your dreams. The following students from the Leonard School have been named ambassadors of peace. They are Caitlin Peralta, Denise Rosa, Elizabeth Baxley, and Annabelle Espinell. Congratulations to them. We'd also like to congratulate Lori Butterfield and the entire Gilmet Elementary School. They won a recycling contest from the Celtics. Thank you to Mr. Cirillo for joining us for the presentation and ceremony, where one of the classes will be going to the Celtics game. I believe it's this Saturday, in honor of being the class that recycled the most materials. Students learned all about the recycling process from start to finish, and a great time was had by all. We had actual Celtics players from past and present come out to speak to the kids, as well as the mascot Lucky performing acrobatic stunts during the assembly. Jeff Green, who you all know is one of the most talented Celtics players, was on hand and spoke very eloquently about his heart condition. For those of you who forgot, Jeff was unable to play last year because he had a heart condition which needed to be fixed. And Jeff said that during his time off, he chose to go back to Georgetown University and finish off his diploma. And he saw that the single most important moment of his life. It wasn't being drafted by the NBA. It wasn't scoring 20 points a game. It was going back to school and finishing his degree from Georgetown. And he told that story to the kids, which was very moving. We appreciate the continued support of the Celtics. The Celtics have worked with me for many years and will continue to do so. We're pleased that they'll be working at the Bruce to take, to finish the gym there and to make it a more presentable experience for the kids. They're going to do that over nicely, I believe, over December, January.
Christmas break.
What's that, Christmas break?
Christmas break.
Okay, so over the winter holiday. And we'll invite folks out to that, so congratulations to them. Lastly, congratulations to the Leonard School intramural football team and cheerleaders. This Saturday, I had an opportunity to go to the stadium to watch many children, football players and cheerleaders square off against each other in the playoffs. The Leonard School beat the pro school twice in order to win the championship. They did so. We want to commend Jim Lichardi, a teacher who runs our intramural programs, of which we're expanding, for doing a great job. I know he's excited to move on to basketball, but it was just a real great day on Saturday. So thanks to all the kids and all the teachers and coaches who came out to help the kids on the weekend put together that great program. Second item on our agenda today is the MASC Mass Joint Conference. We want to thank Mr. Santos for attending down in Cape Cod over November 7th through 10th, the long weekend. I look forward to hearing more about it, and hopefully you'll share some of those experiences with your colleagues. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Joan, can you hand this out for me now? In your agenda, you'll note it's, there's a bulletin for a needs assessment. We asked the principals to take a survey of all the programs that they have inside of their buildings, whether they're enrichment or health and wellness. This is hot off the presses. We just got this, and I wanted to put it in your hands, as I promised I would, as a draft. You do not, you are not expected to go through these 26 pages now, but I give it to you that hopefully in December, we could spend some time talking about it. What this is, is this is a survey that asks the principals, what services do they have in their building? What services do they need in their building? And at the same time, we're going to try to match them up with outside providers to help our kids get the supports they need. Any questions about that? I know that, not about the document, but the process.
So what time period was this taken over?
This was done in, I want to say October. The data has just been crunched and presented in draft format now. A final version should be sent to me within a week, and you guys will get it as soon as I get it. With that said, I know there was a lot of interest from this committee on receiving some of this information, so I wanted to get it to you tonight, even albeit in draft form. What it is, is a survey of every principal in the school system and what they have for programming and what they think they need for programming. So it helps us to better identify how to help those schools. Under other tonight, we've asked the MATCH tutors to come and present to you briefly. As you recall, you have heard from some of the different EMO organizations that are here, working in our schools now in Lawrence. MATCH Tutors is an organization that works at our BMF and INT high schools. They provide intensive tutoring, usually two or three to one, in the area of mathematics for students. Many of our students are new to the country or are behind significantly in mathematics, and this is a way for us to make up a lot of ground quickly. You may have heard of some of their work in Houston, which was very successful in the Houston Independent School District for bringing kids up to proficiency and working with the Lawrence Public Math Teachers to really provide a great math program for our kids, particularly in ninth and 10th grade. So without further ado, I'd ask Alan Safran, are you here, to come up?
Thank you Superintendent, and a pleasure to be here with the school committee. I have with me Antonio Gutierrez to my left, your right, and Andrew Levine, who also worked with me. As the Superintendent said, we were asked to come and provide some extra help to the kids in those two divisions of the high school, BMF and INT. We recruited around the world for full-time fellows to tutor those kids in the school day in those schools. We had 560 applicants for 50 spots from 38 states and six countries. We had applications, so we were able to be very selective and put in place this really impressive group of 50 people, ranging in age from 19 to 77, all with a college degree, four-year degree at least. All had to take and pass a substantial mathematics test to make sure they were mathematically competent. All had to do a sample lesson with two kids and see how they would behave. And had to take feedback from the kids, take feedback from us, and reflect on their own performance. And we particularly love the fellows who were very hard on themselves, because a hallmark of our programs, we want them to take our feedback every day on the job. They work full-time, full-day, full-school year, on 10-and-a-half-month contracts. We did a video about that program as we were out there recruiting for fellows. We'll be recruiting again for fellows for next year's core. We'd love to play that for you, a five-minute video, right now.
They help you through everything, family and schoolwork, no matter how hard you're working or how hard things are, they will help you with anything.
Oh, I love my tutor. He's really cool.
I have this incredible deal, which I wish every teacher had, where I teach students something, and I know that there's always going to be a few kids who need a little extra help, or who I didn't recognize that they were struggling with a certain step. And then the bell rings. And then the next day, first period, they sit down across the table from someone who knows them like the back of their hand. I see students coming out of tutorial, like brimming with ideas. And then by the time that the kids come back to class the next day, it's like magic. They know what I taught. And it's not just because I got it through to every kid, certainly not. It's because there's this network of people checking in on every kid.
Your job is to make sure that they pass their classes and they do well in high school. The big deal is just making sure that the students understand that you're there because you want them to be successful. And then once they understand that, you can break down the information to them, and they'll realize that my tutor is really knowledgeable in these subjects, and then they can help me do well. But you really have to get past the point of, we're here to help you.
It's one tutor trying into the mind of one student. How does that student's mind work? They are part tutor. They work with them on math problems. They push them to be successful. They're also part mentor, part coach, part life sort of changer. And what I really impress upon tutors is, your job is to get to know your students so well that you can motivate them in ways that extend beyond just a tutorial. So our students really react to that. They understand the tutor is a person that cares about them just beyond the A on the paper, or beyond the B that they got on the assessment. They care about, are you set up to be successful when you go wherever you go in life?
It just so happens to be that a lot of inner-city students don't have that strong positive role model in their lives, for whatever reason. So a tutor, in particular, among other things, provides exactly that. I grew up in a crime-stricken neighborhood. Statistically, like my friends, I should have dropped out of high school or college, but I didn't. And that success is due largely to strong relationships with a few of my teachers. I got involved in education because I wanted to be the kind of educator that got me to where I am.
For the past eight years in Boston, we've been implementing a full-time, in-school, professional tutoring program that boosts academic achievement and builds communication with students and parents. And given the effectiveness of this program, we're looking for the first group of pioneers to bring this tutoring to schools and districts around the country. As a tutor, you have a caseload of 12 students that you're tutoring in math. Two students per period, six periods of the day for the entire school year. Again, the tutoring is embedded into the school day, so you're working with the same students full-time, every day. So you can imagine the kind of impact this makes on the students, not only academically, but also in terms of the relationships you're building with them. We're looking for tutors who are idealistic, driven, and most importantly, hungry for feedback. We want people who are looking to constantly improve their tutorials for the sake of their kids. And we need people who will passionately commit to possibly the greatest, most intense year of their lives, and a year that's sure to change their students' lives, too.
For me, it's definitely an honor and privilege to be able to help develop this program and bring this program to other schools in America. I experienced it firsthand, and I know the impact that it can have on individuals, the powerful relationships that form their lifelong. When I started high school, I wasn't even close to being college-ready. I was a C-minus, D-plus student, but every tutor I worked with every year played a significant role in building my academic skills. But more importantly, they helped me stay motivated, they helped me stay confident. I know the benefits of tutoring, because I experienced it firsthand, and I know how powerful it can be. And because of my tutors, I was able to become the first person in my family to go to college. This isn't an after-score, after-thought tutoring program. This is tutoring on a blown-up scale, and because of that, we're going to take students to a whole new level and change the way we think about the education system in America.
Today, I'm releasing a turnaround plan for the Lawrence Public Schools. MATCH Fellows, an intensive tutoring program, will be joining us inside our neighborhood schools. We have a lot to do, but the future of our kids depend on it. Together, we're going to write a new chapter in the history of the Lawrence Public Schools. Thank you for coming today.
We're doing major things in Lawrence, and we're counting on MATCH Tutors to be a big help to that effort.
Well, I think they did a better job. They, we do, and I think Antonio looks better on the screen than he does in person, but you really can make the judgment. I guess, just say another word, Antonio, say a word, and we're happy to host you. Welcome you at any time. We'll take questions, yeah.
How come the BMF and the IT were the only schools picked? There's six of them. What did they have that the other four schools didn't have?
They were Level Fours.
They were the Level Four schools.
They were the Level Four schools.
Oh, okay, they need a lot of help.
Yeah, and the Superintendent picked them, and we said, we'd like to be wherever you need us.
Why is math so hard? I had a hard time in math, and I go back 50 years. Why is it like in science, a very hard subject for most students, including me, to grasp? Is it the fundamentals, or just the word mathematics blows students out?
That's a great question. I think you really have to have good support every step of the way in math, because if you didn't have that good support, in addition, you're challenged by subtraction and multiplication. If you didn't have good support in teaching and multiplication, you're going to have a harder time in algebra. So it's that, and you need good help every step of the way. That's what the tutoring can be a part of, working closely with the teachers and with the principals, whom we really enjoy working with, and with Mike Walter, the headmaster. We're just partnering with the kids. Teachers are doing their job in the classroom, and we're getting a chance, on a one- and two-basis, to supplement that. So it's extra hands. Extra hands make a difference in math, I think.
I graduated in 1954 from the Oliver School that was on the north side, and when I got into high school, I got blown out in math. And a learned person, good friend of mine, I won't mention his name, said the teachers on the south side were better prepared to teach math than the teachers on the north side. That I don't know, but all the students I know that were on the north side got blown out in the first year of math. The students from the south side did not. So my question to you is, is their preparation to these math teachers, can they teach? What's the highest course taught? Calculus. I think that's the highest. They all certify these math teachers to teach the highest course in math, which is calculus.
Well, remember, they're tutoring only the ninth and 10th graders, so the highest course.
I know that, but this is not a theoretical question. It's just a down-to-earth question. Are all your teachers in this program, since we're the, capable of teaching calculus, which to me is the highest form of math taught in schools today?
I would say no. We recruit specifically for people who had tutoring experience, coaching experience, and took and passed our own math tests. Three-quarters of them actually have passed the state mathematics test for licensure, which does go up to calculus. Three-quarters of them, but they're not, none of them is tutoring calculus. They're only tutoring up to geometry. And they're not teachers. They're just tutors, and that's a different kind of qualification. They don't manage a class of 25, five periods a day. They don't develop their own curriculum. They don't develop their own assessments. They do the other work that tutors do in this very personal relationship. So it's a different skill set, a different standard, but their math level is strong at the levels that they're tutoring.
Now, you just brought up a point that I didn't think, oh, thank you for quaking my interest. They're tutors. They don't get paid the same amount as a regular teacher. What would be the differential?
I don't know what the teacher's salary is, but our tutors.
Oh, I have it over here. It's starting off at $42,000. I think I started off at $180 back there in the antiquated days, when I worked for 75 cents an hour in the mills with my mother. But that's not the point. You're laughing, this is the truth.
Yeah.
It's the truth, pal. 1957, right down here, 75 cents an hour. Today, I think the minimum wage in Massachusetts, Antonio, is $8.50. Probably my 75 cents was worth more than $8.50. But the point is this, is there a relative large difference in a tutoring position and a teacher's position?
Yes, it's about a third of that.
Oh, they're working for a third?
Yeah. And what's remarkable is, I had 560 applicants who wanted that job, and we had 50 slots. These are top graduates from the top colleges in America. They're mid-career people who simply wanted to leave their career 20 years in business or industry. And they're retired folks, including a man who's 45 years in the education field. He said, his words, "I want to go out as a tutor." He didn't want the headaches of administration, didn't want the challenge of teaching. He just wants to be with two kids at a period, every day, every period of the day, every day of the week, and do this till he's done. And one of his kids, the principal's come in and said, he's connecting to that man like he's not connected before, because that man has a wealth of wisdom and a grandfatherliness that makes a difference in connecting to kids.
Now, these tutors, do they get the same benefits as a regular teacher? Retirement, they don't get into the retirement system?
No, we're saving the city money. They're on their own, they get the stipend.
How about health benefits if they get sick?
No, they got their own. Again, the retirees and the mid-career typically had it. The younger ones typically take advantage of the Commonwealth connector. And many of them came from out of state, so they were very grateful to have it. Many of them still on their college or parents' plans, so those three cohorts, the recent grads, the mid-career, and the retirees, really fit this job well and gives us a pool of people that I think would be really powerful here.
I now bring you to June 2013. What do you see happening to these students taught by these well-qualified tutors? What do you see them, are they going up, 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 or are they staying where they are?
The tutors or the kids?
The kids, always the kids. The tutors are...
Yeah.
Education at this level is for the children.
Of course. So the kids get promoted, and we're here another year after this year, so we'll be again with the ninth and 10th graders. So the ninth graders we had this year will stay with them in their 10th grade. The 10th graders go on to 11th, and we'll have a new crop of ninth graders. That's the budget that covers two grades, and that's what we are happy to provide.
Well, for the people out there who don't like me, I couldn't care less. We are the lowest-performing school system in Massachusetts. The commissioner sent Mr. Riley in here. I call him the miracle man. If he does it good, if not, goodbye. He has to do it. But you see this improving overall education for the students that you have?
We have 12 different measures that we are holding ourselves accountable for, including student connectedness, parent satisfaction, kids' confidence in their math ability, the MAP scores, the MCAS scores, other measures. And I intend to score on all of them. It takes, it's still early in this year, so I can't tell you we're going to reach those results. I can tell you we're working hard to be on track for those results. We're going to be happy to come back at the end of the year when those results are in.
Oh, I'd be more than glad to have the, Mr. Riley, bring you back, because to me, it's always about results, and we got to pull ourselves up, as the commissioner was here last month, and we are the law of the law, and I don't think we are the law of the law, but statistics do not lie. Thank you for your time, gentlemen.
I just tell you, we love Jerry Acosta and Carleen Pignato, the two principals that are in place. Mike Walter and Juan Rodriguez have been very supportive. And you know, the custodial, the maintenance, and the security staff at the high schools are tremendous people and really supportive. We're really glad to be part of the team.
I don't know the two principals you mentioned, but I know Mr. Walters. I have faith in him.
We do, too.
I have a lot of faith in Mr. Walters. Thank you, gentlemen.
The tutoring takes place during the day?
Yeah, so it's a period in the kid's schedule. On that seven-period rotating block waterfall schedule, it's one of the periods for all the ninth graders and all the 10th graders.
And these are full-time jobs that these tutors?
Full-time. Tutors work from 8:15 to 5:00, Monday through Friday, on the school schedule.
Now, where's the funding coming for this program? Is it a nonprofit? Is it coming from the state? Is it coming from the federal grant? Is it...
Yeah, it's more a question for the Superintendent, but roughly, there was federal money through Race to the Top, through the school redesign grants. Those are, that was the lion's share of the funding for the program.
And you said it was 50 spots?
We had, we have 50, because the ratio of tutor to kid is 1 to 12 in two periods per day. It's roughly 600 kids, so we have 50 tutors serving 600 kids, 50 tutors.
Thank you.
If I want to help free, what can I do? For example, if I want to jump to help, because I know math, I know some, I study...
So first thing is, come visit us. And it could be that you observe some tutoring, give advice about how it can be better, you know, connect with the kids. We welcome you to come and visit, I think, as a first step.
And I also think it's really important to have help, you know, in terms of looking for high-quality candidates for next year as well. And so if you could refer anyone, especially from the community, I think it'd be incredibly powerful thing to have people who grew up in Lawrence, went to college, and now coming back to make a difference. So that's really important.
Again, it'll be very competitive, though. We had 11 applicants for every spot last year. I think because the job seems very satisfying, we've interviewed every one of the fellows. Their satisfaction level is about an eight and a half or nine. I think we'll have more applicants for the same number of spots next year, which, again, allows us to be very careful in selection.
And are the tutors contracted to you guys? Are they just a one-year thing? Is it a, we have you for five? Is it, like, so what's the commitment of the tutor, essentially?
So MATCH Tutors is contracted for two school years. The tutors do, are on 11-month contracts with the city. And at the end of the 11 months, they go and do what they're going to do. What's interesting is that many would like to stay on as second-year tutors. We ask for a one-year commitment. The pay is no better in the second year, but they fall in love with the job, and already at this time of the year, in fact, before the year started, some said, I'd like to stay for two. That's terrific.
And when, when these tutors come on, is it, do they just move to the local area? Because I mean, it's not a full-paying gig. I mean, this isn't a $40,000 a year salary, so...
It's not at all.
Do they, do they live in the local area? Do they, is it, they all live in New Hampshire and they just come down, like...
So there's those three categories, again. The recent grads have found housing at the, you know, the Monarch Apartments and some others, where they're putting four into a two-bedroom, or two into a one-bedroom, because they're used to that from college accommodations and makes it affordable. The mid-career and retirees typically have their own housing, some coming up from Roselandale, Whitman on the South Shore, Bedford, Level, some in Lawrence. So we have them from all over, making that commute, because they love the, they love the job.
I have this to say, and Mr. Riley knows my feelings on it, and the Assistant Superintendent. Do you like to see parents, because parents have complained to me that when they go into schools, the hierarchy does not treat them properly. What's your feeling when a parent comes in and says, "I like to be shown around"? Are they warmly greeted, or do you scream at them, tell them to get out?
I'm a parent, you know. It's apparent to me that when we've seen parents in the school, they're very welcome. We'd love to see parents, because it's part of the effort for kids, is to really have a couple caring adults surrounding them, so we welcome parents and guardians.
Maybe you ought to give lectures to some of our administrators. Thank you for your time, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Some questions for me?
Funding, obviously. They said Race to the Top grants, was it purely a grant program? Was this just a...
So right now, the funding is Race to the Top money, the ARA money, and school improvement grants that are given to Level Four schools, turnaround schools. We've contracted them on a two-year program, because we want to see the results. And then, you know, if it's successful, like we believe it's going to be, then we're going to figure out a way to bake it into our traditional budget, but for right now, it's mostly grant-funded.
What about the Race to the Top funding? Does that run out? Is it, what kind of funding?
Next year, right? Yeah. Race to the Top was a program put forward by the federal government that extended over a short period of years, and next year is the last year of that funding.
So for the funding section of it, I mean, this is, this is an excellent program that we, I think, could benefit the students very well. I mean, is this the kind of thing that we want to continue to contract out to them, or is this something that we want to take on as a system, or...
You know, I think it's up for discussion. You know, as with everything, they have a great track record in Houston. We want to make sure that track record, I mean, early returns are very positive about how they fit into the culture and climate of the school. The kids seem pretty receptive. You know, one of the things that I've seen in my time as an educator, kids sometimes in a class of 30, if they don't know what to answer, are reluctant to ask a question, particularly in math, where people can get scared of math. Whereas if they're working with one-on-one or two-on-one, they're more likely to ask for help. And we've seen a lot of that already. And I think it's, there's been a real relationship between the Lawrence High School math teachers and the MATCH tutors, and they've been kind of working together to make sure it's a strong program for the kids.
And what about an expansion of the program? I mean, if this is a really successful program, do, where do you see it extending to? Just to the Level Fours, to... Just to the Level IVs, to high school?
No, you know, I think there's been other high schools that at the beginning of the year asked, "How can we get this program?" And, you know, what I said was, "Let's make sure it's as effective as we think it's going to be." And if it is, then we have to do some work to figure out how to fund it going forward. The beauty of the grant funding is we've got two years to really look and assess this program in a deep way. And then we've got time to bake it into our traditional budget if it is something that's beneficial to our students.
And the Level IV funding, when does that run out?
That's probably three years from the start of the award.
Okay. Thank you.
For each school.
Mr. Riley?
Yes, sir.
With all, thank you. With all these people you brought in and all these programs you brought, I want to congratulate you. It takes a person that has a lot of chutzpah to turn over the system, just turn it over, over the, now, in June, which is not that far away, you're going to evaluate all these programs that you brought in.
Absolutely.
And if a group is not doing to your satisfaction well, will they be retained for the following school year?
Highly unlikely.
That's an excellent answer and I want to congratulate you. You don't do your job, you don't help the children of Lawrence. Thank you, Mr. Riley.
Thank you. Any further questions on Match? Thank you. At this time, we'd ask Dave Pekarsky to come up.
If I, Antonio, keep up good work, I'm looking forward to interacting with you.
So just as a point of clarity, Pat Mariano, before the unexpected passing, I was hoping to engage with her and with you on a draft of a PowerPoint she had put together revolving around getting out to parent nights and teaching parents, talking with parents about the turnaround plan. With her absence tonight, we're going to forego that and hopefully move that till December. But in her place, I'd like to ask Dave Pekarsky to come and talk briefly about LPTV media, the website, and any communication questions you guys may have.
I have 100 for him.
100? I don't know if we have time for 100, Mr. V.
I have questions for him.
Good thing we have students running the equipment for us back there, otherwise we'd be in trouble, so.
Hi, kids.
That's Selena and Yama Lee from-
Beautiful names.
HLD, LHS.
Beautiful names.
Over the past couple of years, I'm slowly building a media empire. We started back with one channel on Comcast. Most people still refer to us as Channel 10, but we are on Channel 99 on Comcast now, also on Verizon, Verizon Channel 41. We also have a YouTube presence. We have a Lawrence Public Schools YouTube channel, so you can see all the great videos, recycling thing from the Gimmet School, all the other great happenings in Lawrence Public Schools. A lot of those are on YouTube. And just last year, we took over content for the website. The IT department did a great job building the website. I compare it to a house. They built the frame and now it's up to us to put the furniture in, slap a coat of paint on it, make it look good. So that's, that's a major thing we're doing now.
I have a question of Mr. Pekarsky through the gentleman in charge. At the last school committee meeting, I was up there and I got cut off. Yeah, I got cut off and I didn't say, and I don't know if it was you, you have a time limit, I wasn't allowed to say that I've never collected a dime for my education from Lawrence Public School System and other things, and I was cut off in midstream, which I think, no, let me finish, David, please, which I think was very impolite. It, this is the second time it's happened. Right in the middle of what I was going to say, I got cut off. And I, you know, I took offense at that. I know that I have no power. All the power's invested in that gentleman near City Nixu, but I supposedly am an elected official. And when I got up there and I was saying, and I got a cough when I say, "The City of Lawrence School System didn't pay a dime for my five college degrees," and I got cut off at that point. And then I went into, in my opinion, and I've known you for years, I like, very unprofessional. And that's the second time it happened. I was going to say, I've had, didn't receive a dime from the city for my five degrees and I got cut off. And that's the second time it's happened. And I take it as a personal insult. I know I have no power. I'm just sitting here and Mr. Riley doesn't have to meet with us, but, you know, I'm not going to take being insulted by you or anybody. I just, that's the second time it's happened. I got cut off in midstream. Very unprofessional, David. Very unprofessional.
Well, can I say that nobody has ever asked me to cut anybody off during a speech?
Well-
And we have never done it.
Well, this happened.
There might have been one time where a battery died in the middle of a talk and we changed.
No, it wasn't one time, David.
Has it been in the rebroadcast you're talking about actually for me?
Yeah, I asked, I got cut off in midstream and a couple of my neighbors who liked me very well want to know, "Jim, you had something to say?" I said, "Yeah, I got cut off in midstream." Now, I don't know if it was deliberate or not, but I had things I wanted to say. And one of them was, I never received a dime for my education from the Lawrence Public School, so I have five degrees, and I got cut off. And people, people come up and I looked at the rebroadcast, I just cut off. I don't know whether it was you or the channel, I just cut off. And I think it's very, very, David, and I've known you for years, unprofessional.
You know I would never do anything like that.
Well, then it, it was when Mariah came down from the wind.
We keep copies of the old meetings, I'd be happy to show you a copy that we have and you can look at it.
I don't want to see it. I saw it on my thing, I got cut off. And all I, I got to say is-
Well, I apologize if that happened. We'd like to know if there are problems like that because it's not deliberate and if something like that happens, we'd like to know about it.
I'm one aware of the fact that we meet here thanks to Mr. Riley. He doesn't have to meet with us all. And like the commissioner said, in certain states where the Department of Education take over, school committees are abandoned. Now, the commissioner has brought, and I think he's very highly qualified, by the way, Mass General Law that said that schools could be taken over made no provision of doing away with school committees. I personally would have rather seen the law be the law that the commissioner said, "Do away with us." You know, really, you've got no input at all. You know, the people that elected us, it wouldn't bother me at all. I don't know how my other colleagues or, but we meet because of this man's generosity. We have no input. You know, I take that as a personal insult. I'm talking about a thing and I, and Mr. Riley's getting bored, so am I.
I'm not getting bored, Mr. V. I just promise you that no one intentionally tried to cut you off. I'll check into it, but-
I would appreciate that.
Our policy is, I think-
Can you say what meeting it is? I'll pull up the tape.
Yeah, the last meeting. It was at the last meeting. This is November. It was at the October school committee meeting.
Well, take it out and I'll look at the, look at the meeting and see if there's anything on there, so.
Well, listen, I don't expect any apology, but I got kind of angry.
We do apologize, Mr. V. I can guarantee you it wasn't intentional.
And Mr. Riley, you're a man of honor. I, I accept it and I say thank you, but it did occur.
Okay, we'll look into it. Other questions for the media?
Well, I, I just want to say thank you. I mean, I think you do an excellent job in comparison to like Channel 8 or Channel 22. I mean, our local broadcast channels aren't exactly the most high-tech, as it were, but I think you guys do a pretty good job for what you're given. That being said, how often are programs run? I mean, I don't, I unfortunately don't get to sit down and watch TV all that much. So what, what is the broadcast schedule essentially? Is it just programs that have happened throughout the day? Is it just us all day long? Because I hope it's not that.
No, no. We have a definite time where we rerun the school committee, but, well, we have a set lineup of shows, some shows that we produce ourselves. We have a show called Rewind, where all the little things that happen in the schools, like the short two or three-minute clips, we put those together in a show called Rewind and that runs pretty much every day of the week at different times. We have a Storytime show. We go out and we tape kindergarten teachers or elementary school teachers just reading a book. We have a Spanish version of that called Laura de Cuentos. A lot of shows from the high school. There are three schools, HLD, HHS, and PFA do a news show every week. We run that. Plus, we try to do a game of the week during sports season from the high school, any special events at the high school and any special events that happen in other schools. We've maintained the rights to other shows. NASA has a show, we run that. We have some shows that are supposed to help people learn English. Crossroads Cafe is one. So we try to rotate those, we try to keep those throughout the year. And then just stay current with anything new that's happening, we stick that in. So it's hard to maintain a regular schedule when all of a sudden we have a special event that happened. We try to do our best to do it. And the thing with the YouTube channel now, it can be seen anytime. If it's a great event, we put it on there and just anytime on your computer, you can watch it there.
Now, are you archiving any of the, like, former videos? Like, how, and how much have you archived?
We pretty much have every school committee meeting for the last 10 years. Big events like all the graduations that we do, we keep all of those. Some of the smaller events may probably just keep for a couple of years. Usually if the schools don't have a, a lot of things that we do, we give a copy to the schools. If they don't have it, I'll give it to them.
The reason I ask is because a couple city councilors have mentioned it before, that they want to start archiving it at the school library, not the school library, but the public library, how they have, you know, how they have former news articles and they, they put them on the tapes that you can have a million newspapers on or something like that. So they, they were looking to archive their meetings, so if there's ever a reason why anything is lost or anything like that, they can go to the public library and look up former meetings. How difficult would that be, one?
School committee meetings or?
Well, school committee meetings, major events, I'm thinking like if some kid comes in 2050-
Right.
And they can go and look at the graduation of 2002.
I could see big things like that, that's probably a great idea to have copies of graduations, as long as it's not a liability problem with, depending on what they, once they get the, the copy of it, you never know what people do with it. They can tape it right off the air and do that, but, yeah, I'm not sure what we're supposed to do with the old school committee meetings. I think we're supposed to keep them for seven years and then can get rid of them, but.
Just purely for historical value, I mean, especially the graduations, because sometimes your books get lost and, and the only people we have left is the videotape.
Well, we have contacts at the library. Sometimes we do one of those Storytime shows there, so I can contact people at the library and see if they want to start a collection of that. You know, the superintendent thinks it's a good idea, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pekarsky.
Thank you, David.
Before we move on to any final questions, if you have any final questions, I've been asked by the commissioner to invite you to the board meeting. The state board is meeting on November 27th, I believe, from 8:00 to noon here in Lawrence. And so if anyone wants to come, we will get you a more formal invitation, but the commissioner has asked if folks from the school committee want to come, they are more than welcome to be there.
I think we'll be there.
We are in the process of trying to determine which site is best. We've had some folks drive around to try to look at parking issues. Remember, this is a meeting that is, it's usually a four or five-hour meeting that addresses not just Lawrence, but all kind of happenings across the state. So people come from all over the state to attend this meeting. So we will give you more information as it becomes available, but for now, if you could tentatively mark November 27th, 8:00 in the morning, as a possible time.
Is that a Saturday or?
No, that's a Tuesday.
I think it's a Tuesday morning. I think it's after Thanksgiving.
That will be during a, we will have school during that day?
We will have school, so it'll be in either a library or an auditorium that will take place. With that said, that closes by part of the evening. Are there questions, anything that's come up?
I have a question, Mr. Riley.
Yes, sir.
I know this is, you're going into the third month of the school year and I know you set goals. Same question that I repeated to you. What do you want to happen this year that you proposed at the beginning of the school year to improve the educational opportunities for the children of Lawrence? Your number one goal, Mr. Riley?
Well, my number one goal is improved academic outcomes via the MCAS test. We're looking to double the amount of schools that are hitting over SGP 50, which means they're closing the achievement gap, not increasing it. But as you know, there are other goals that we've attacked. Facilities has been something we've spent a lot of work on. Arts and enrichment, we heard about flag football and cheerleading and basketball. That's a goal. You'll see in front of you, again, hot off the press, the most recent October numbers for student attendance, which has improved significantly in almost every school compared to last year. So we're going to keep apprised of this, but these are the kind of goals we're looking to hit and we will keep you informed of them as they are available to you.
Just quickly looking at this, I want to commend you. I mean, from, just quickly looking at it, I think there's one school that's dropped and only one that stayed the same, and that was the Lahey and the HLC which dropped. I mean, that, that's something to be commended. I mean, some of these are marginal, obviously, because some had very good attendance to begin with, but I think that whatever you're doing, when it comes to attendance, please keep doing it.
Well, we're optimistic. You know, the year is young, but when we compare our numbers compared to last year, they have improved. Special thanks to Dr. Bergeron, who's been helping to lead our efforts in this area and been monitoring staff and school attendance. Thanks to our families, who've been sending our kids to school more regularly. I think what we've seen is in some of our alternative programs for our high school students, that's where we have our most, our work cut out for us, both at HLC and at the Phoenix. We, with some of our most fragile kids, our most needy kids, we've got to work on improving their attendance. But overall, we're cautiously optimistic about what we've seen so far.
When it comes to attendance, I know we have a uniform policy implemented. How aggressively is that being, not pursued, but implemented? And I know it's throughout the entire range of classes, so how, how well is that being implemented?
So I think, you know, I was at the high school today and I was very pleased with the students are almost overwhelmingly majority in uniform. And I think what you see is some slight variation school to school, but overall, the uniform is something that's been well adopted by the community here in Lawrence. As a parent with two children who go to a uniform school, I know it makes my life easier in August to purchase school uniforms versus the latest fashion brand wear, which is often much more expensive. So I think schools have done a good job of it. I think you have some people very aggressive, some folks that we need to work with, but that battle continues.
And who, who is the person who implements this? Is this the administration or?
It's building to building. You know, it's under the principal's direction for the most part. They typically, you know, will assign, you know, an operational person, could be a teacher leader, could be an assistant principal, could be everybody on the school, in the staff, asking, "Hey, the homeroom teacher, where's your uniform? Why don't you have it?" Keeping track, making sure the kids are showing up prepared, ready for school.
Now, in the, you said homeroom. Is the high school, do they have a homeroom, like, period? Is it like a half an hour period or is it?
So it's, they've changed. Mr. Walters, is he still here? Do you want to come up and talk about some of the changes we've had this year around how they code attendance? One of the things I will speak to before Mr. Walters gets to speak to it is, you know, they have a table at the front of the building set up to try to deal with some of the tardiness issues. So they've really been tracking kids that have been coming in late and really trying[1645.62] and really trying to stem the flow of that. With that said...
And with that, as Mr. Riley said, we do have that table in front. The assistant principals are there from 8:30 to 9 o'clock every morning. We do track the kids that are coming in late. We do give them their warnings. We also take disciplinary action when we do have repeaters with those students. The most important thing is getting the message across that the students are in school on a timely basis for 8:30. Excuses after a certain time period go away, and we don't put up with the excuses. The administration with the faculties of each building have done a wonderful job as far as putting that together this year. The numbers have gone down tremendously as far as tardies are concerned. As far as uniforms, again, what Mr. Riley has already stated, we do try to improve. There are students that are out of uniform at certain times. Those things are addressed by administrators and teachers in each one of the buildings. Concerning advisories, not all of the schools have advisories on a daily basis. HLD, for example, meets on Friday for a half hour. Their faculty and staff work with the students as far as what are the needs of the building, what improvements need to be taken. But all in all, I see improvements as far as what the students are trying to do to improve themselves and also the campus life or environment atmosphere of the high school. Teachers have been tremendous as far as implementing the attendance policies and also the uniform policy.
I have questions of the principal, Mr. Riley, which you're okay?
Headmaster.
He's the principal?
Headmaster.
Well, the principal of all the principals.
Sign with me.
I've known him for years. As I had spoken, Mr. Riley, to Mr. Kualter's back there, I do go over once in a while, not to the high school. There are children going over to have Dunkin' Donuts and the other ones. Now, I see a problem, and the teachers go over too. So the teachers go over, they must sign over, but the students. And like I said before, a couple of months ago, I will not approach a student, but I know they're Lawrence High students, because they have uniforms on. And I, Mr. Kualter, I had questioned him on this, and I think I had questioned you on this, sir. And I know teachers are going over. What if theoretically, one of those children are hit by a car? Where's the responsibility of the city of Lawrence Public Schools? Or, I know the teachers are going over. I can't do nothing about teachers. I know that. They're a different breed, they got the union... But I do see kids go, and like I had said to you previously, Mr. Riley, I will not approach them. It's happening. And I had asked Mr. Kualter's back there, if he knew about this and that. To me, there is a tremendous liability if one of those children go and get hit. Now, I'm overreactionary. I've always been overreactionary. To me, it's a problem that's not being addressed at the high school.
Well, I would actually dispute that, Mr. V. I think the tracking that's gone on there, by tracking the kids that come in late, to seeing who's showing up with a Dunkin' Donuts cup, has significantly cut down on the amount of kids who are tardy every day and prevented kids from going across that street. The reality is absolutely right. We've already had several students hit by cars and my chief of staff hit by a car in the city of Lawrence.
How's she doing?
She's doing much better, thank you.
Thank God.
And although these weren't, these didn't happen during the morning hours, they can happen anytime. And so we want our, to get our kids in school, you know, and we've been aggressive, and Mr. Kualter's and his staff have done a great job of being aggressive about trying to stem that flow. Is it a perfect system? Not yet, but we're working towards it.
Mr. Riley, I'm not talking about in the morning, when they come to, I'm talking during periods. I'm not talking specifically, and I think both of you are doing a hell of a job, I'll say that publicly, a hell of a job. But what you said is not what I meant. I'm talking about periods in school, because I know teachers, they're privileged, they're going over, and it's their responsibility. Now, you admitted, and I say thank God for your honesty, that a couple of kids have been hit. Is the city of Lawrence responsible? If my kid gets hit, I want to sue everybody and its uncle. What is the liability and what's happening? I'm not talking, sir, and Mr. Kualter's about the beginning of school, I'm talking during the seven, eight periods a day. There's some getting, because I know teachers go over there, and I won't interact with them until I told Mr. Kualter's. It's the kids, and the liability, it's tremendous. And you admitted they come in with coffees. I'm not talking about that, Mr. Riley. I'm talking during the school day, sir.
You know, what I'd say is, you know, the patrols and the amount of folks that are out on the, in the street and in that area to prevent kids from going has been, you know, ramped up. So we're working on it, but, you know, it's a, it's an ongoing problem when you have so many students at a high school level. I think it's, in fairness to Mr. Kualter, who's done just an amazing job.
Oh, yeah.
I think it's much, much improved, but there's always going to be work to do, Mr. V. And to say otherwise would be lying to you, and I'm not going to do that.
No, you're not a liar, and I appreciate that. And I know both of you are working your tails off, and I congratulate you. I've always been, I think you're doing an excellent job, and I know Mr. Kualter's for years, for years. You're doing the best you can, but the point is, and I'm not emphasizing it properly or very diligently, it is happening. And to me, it's a major responsibility for the city of Lawrence if one of those kids get hurt. That's my point. And it is happening. I know teachers that sign out, and they go over there. They're a special class, I guess, but it's the kids, and both of you, I will not fault you, as all, you're doing an A-plus job. It's this minority of minorities that are doing this, and I'm afraid if someone gets hit, the liability aspect, gentlemen, is immense.
I agree with you, Mr. V, and I also have to compliment the business partners that we have. They inform us of situations like that. We do, when they, they call the school.
And what businesses are that, Mr. Kualter's?
Espadas.
What businesses contact you, sir?
Taco Bell.
Taco Bell's there, yes.
Dunkin' Donuts.
They're there?
Wendy's. Those three in particular have given us phone calls, and we do, when we get those phone calls, we do pay the visit to those places.
Why don't they just shut them off? They come in, they know them, they have uniforms. No, I can't serve you. And I know that's not your business, or Mr. Riley's.
I think it's easier for them to have us come over with, since we know the kids.
But we know, gentlemen, we know there's a problem there. That's all. That's all I'm trying to point out.
Yeah, and we're working to improve it every day.
And I think you're both doing a great job. It's not harassing you, like many people say, "I'm a harasser." No, I'm not a punisher. I'm just a human being who likes to see things go better, and I want to thank both of you for your diligence. I really. It's, maybe the high school should have never been built there. What can I tell you?
Okay, thank you, Mr. V. Any final questions?
So concerning the discipline on campus, has, have you noticed a change in the numbers at all, positive or negative, for like in-house suspensions, detentions, things like that?
At the early point, you know, as far as that, Mr. Blatch, right, you know, I can see improvements in certain areas, and we have to make improvements in other areas. So I'm not going to say that it's 100% better. We still have work to do, but I see a positive improvement as far as the atmosphere at the high school on campus.
And do we still have kind of the in-house suspension in the sense of, like, you sit in a classroom all day with, like, a teacher monitoring, like, all the in-house suspension kids, or is it like a change system now? Like, what are the disciplinary actions that are taken, essentially?
You know, depending on what the infringements, as far as the policies that are concerned, I mean, they move up from a teacher detention, administrative detention, to in-house, to out-of-school suspension, and it depends on the number of times a student may be involved in those situations. Yes, we still have in-house in all the schools at the high school, and those students do get work from the teachers to perform while they're in in-house.
Thank you.
Any final questions before moving on to public comment? Okay, at this time, we'd like to open up public participation. Mr. Molly, you're first. Thank you, Mr. Kualter.
Thank you, Michael. Keep up the good work, pal.
Good evening, honorable member of Lawrence School Committee. When Honorable Mayor Lantigua, in his brave and bold move to save our 13,000 children of Lawrence Public School, request of Commissioner Chester and Superintendent Riley to came to our city and to help our children and revive our Lawrence Public School. Now, in the era of the turnaround of Lawrence Public School, our citizen and our parent are asking, can we really rally around the turnaround plan? When our citizen cannot rally around the plan, why there is no job security for our teachers? We as the citizen demand that this committee hold the high-paid principals accountable for problem with the turnaround plan or a slowing of the turnaround plan. In our city, there have been a strong bond between our citizen and our teachers. We demand your support of our teachers and their union. Collaboration, cooperation between citizen and parent and the teachers and the school administration, not blaming, not creating a scapegoat for our teachers. Rallying around the plan only possible when the principals do not make teachers as a scapegoat and blame everything on our teachers. The high-paid principals across the Lawrence Public School need to be held responsible. Rally around the plan only possible when our teachers be bold and free from any intimidation and retaliation by high-paid principal could come to this committee and to this podium and share with our citizen the problem they are experiencing with Lawrence Public School. Do not blame everything on our teachers. Our citizen and our parent have a long-term support and respect for our teachers. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Molly. Mr. Vittorioso?
Thank you, sir. Good evening, my fellow human beings. I want to thank all the people who went out and vote. The line at the Pathem School, I live right across the street from it, people waited for over an hour. This is democracy. I want to thank all the parents who volunteered for the PTOs. A school is only as good as its parents. I took this 95-year-old man, a veteran of Pearl Harbor, to vote at the Pathem School. Now, if you go into the gym of the Pathem School, you've got to step up, as one of the custodians says, because that gym is warped. You've got to step up, and then it goes down. He's 95 years old, and he almost fell. You mean to tell me, when you're going in to vote, you've got to be worried about where you step? That is a problem. And 95 years old, he's a veteran of that Holocaust that happened in Hawaii. I requested from an administrator information that a parent wanted me to get. No response. Now, that's the way it is, school committee members.